Thank you and welcome to everyone that's watching us via Facebook to our Common Council Caucus Meeting. Caucus Meeting is where we get an opportunity to discuss the items that will be going before the full council tomorrow. So we'll have with us department heads and representatives that can share some insight as to the items that will be going before the common council. With that, we're going to start with the Corporation Council's office. We have Delano Dowell representing the Controller's Office. You're muted.
Hello, sorry about that. I'm gonna have to know, everyone, we have a number of items that we did file with the council last week. One of the items is our annual audit plan. This plan is something that's required by the Controller's Office to submit each year. And basically, what the audit, what the plan does, it summarizes the audits we've completed this past fiscal year and some of the audits that we plan on doing this upcoming fiscal year. If you guys had a chance to review it, and we might have more discussion about the annual audit plan, and it's something that, like I said, we do every year. Do you guys have any questions in regards to that plan right now? Or we could talk about it next week?
It's going to Finance Committee, so I'm sure there'll be some questions in Finance.
No problem. One thing we do, we also noted, we filed was the audit we did for wireless devices for the Buffalo Fire Department. We did audit where they had, I believe, thirteen devices. So one of the goals was, okay, are we using these devices? And I think it's around sixty-seven hundred a year. That is, sorry, six K a year that it costs the city. And this is like one of the first audits we've done where the devices weren't being used. I think out of five out of, five out of thirteen devices might have been used. That's like cost to the city, almost like thirty-seven hundred dollars. We worked with the Fire Department, and the Fire Department, they went ahead and took us up on our word in regards. So if you're not using a turn호man, you could save the city money. I think it's saving the city almost like thirty-seven hundred dollars a year by them turning in wireless devices that they normally don't use. So that's something that maybe one of the first, where we had a department take us up on, on our audit and complete the audit, the requirement prior to us even finalizing an audit. So we do, the controller do a part, the Fire Department, for their actions to reduce costs for the taxpayers of the city of Buffalo.
Thank you, thank you.
The third item is, and this is something, we, we know you guys approved the Resolution for Resident Deficiency Note last week. Under the Controller's direction, City Financial Advisor, he went and had a conversation with JP Morgan Chase. And they did agree on Friday to reduce the interest rate from one point two-two percent to one point two, one point two-oh percent. It's a point oh-two difference, but just having a conversation, we know you guys are concerned about the interest rate. We know the controller really was pushing us, her team, to go back to see if we can get a lower interest rate. And that's rare, from our perspective, where JP Morgan Chase has already given us a great rate compared to other loans that were, bonds that were issued this year. So, but just for us to be able to get a lower interest rates, good for us. So that's a letter that we did file with you guys also. And I think the last thing is the cash flow report. We do have May thirty-first cash flow numbers as of today. We filed with you guys last week. And just a couple of things you wanna, how you guys look at, is that we could see that the city ended with a negative thirty-four million dollars in their cash account. We understand that we still waiting on June's state payment to come in. So hopefully, when that come in, that reversed that negative thirty-four. We also wanna you guys to look at where, once again, if you look over month over month, where we're losing money is really like sales tax revenue, service charge revenue, and then fines. And then another thing we want you to really look at and concentrate on, we brought in for the month of May, nine point nine million in cash, but we spent thirty-two million. So we know this pandemic is really affecting the city finances, where the controller and her team's taking every measure, whereas we're tracking and monitoring what's going on. But this is something, this cash flow report definitely let you know where the city is. And that was, that's it for our group. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Sure. Any questions regarding the items that Mr. McDowell spoke on? A question on the savings, that one point two-two versus the lower number, the one point oh?
One point two-oh, yes.
What, what does that for, in terms of dollars and cents, what, what?
We haven't done that analysis. We just know it's a reduction of point oh-two percent. But that's something we can do for the Finance Committee had an opportunity.
That would be good to find out exactly how much of the savings it is to the city. Thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Any questions for the Controller's Office? No questions? We have public works with us here? Commissioner Mike Finn?
Yeah, I'm unmuted. Oh, no, I'm off mute. Hello, everyone. So our, yeah, our, our items, we've got several change orders. I took to heart the feedback that was provided a couple of meetings ago. We've developed a new template, a new standard for all of our change orders for our department. These items reflect that, and I'm hopeful that it provides the explanation that Common Council was looking for for each item. But I'd happily accept feedback as we continue to work through, work through that. The two other items that I wanted to highlight, good news, permission to accept CHIPS funds, this is later than usual. We typically get our notice for CHIPS funds right after the state budget is approved in April and are able to report this item at the beginning of May. With everything going on at the state, there was a delay in them notifying us that we are having our CHIPS funds. But the good news is that this is the full allocation that was put into the state budget. And that will help us to be able to maintain the paving and infrastructure program that we were already planning on. And the, the other item that I wanted to highlight, the emergency additional services required, modern portable toilets, number twenty-four, that is an item for portable toilets at our parks. We needed, we already have an agreement with Modern to do portable toilets, but we had to up it so that they could be cleaned to the standard that's necessary for the prevention of the spread of COVID. We'll be able to get reimbursed for that additional cost, I'm confident in. We did need to add those services to the modern portable toilet contract. Those are all my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner, regarding the portable toilets, we had a problem over at Broderick Park. They had taken the portable toilet out. And we found that the people were actually using, unfortunately, bathrooms in, within the park. Do we have a portable toilet back there now?
There will be one at Broderick Park if it's not there already. I know that that was an important one for our list. I can confirm that with Deputy Commissioner Rab if he's not. He was trying to call in, is, I'm trying to see if Andy's on.
Is he on?
Oh, yeah. Oh, go ahead, Andy. He did call in.
Okay, yeah, no, there's the Broderick, the toilets were placed Friday.
Okay, thank you.
So we have units in, and now the, the contract change order is to get them cleaned daily. So each unit will be serviced daily, and we'll be keeping track of costs. We're placing them in high-use areas, in those areas where we're issuing permits for picnic shelters, or as we work with some of the youth sports organizations.
Commissioner, regarding the, the CHIPS funding, that money has already been decided how it's gonna be used?
Yes. The list of planned streets for paving sidewalks that we've already discussed with all of the council members, assumed that we were going to get our typical CHIPS allocation. So I'm, I'm glad that, that this was confirmed by the state, given their, the difficulty they're experiencing financially. But this isn't anything new that we weren't expecting.
Any questions for the Commissioner? Councilmember Rashid Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, thank you for the explanation on the change orders. I appreciate it. But I did have a question regarding the one for Erdman. I mean, that's a significant change order. It's like a sixty-one percent increase. I mean, weren't they aware of the conditions? I mean, I know, you know, as you said, it was a narrow area, it was difficult. But that's a significant number.
Yeah, the rationale for Erdman change order is that the, through the study that the city and Erdman did together, the city decided that the best decision was to go a different course than we had originally assumed to upfront. And that's the reason why it is so significant. You are correct, that is a, a large change order. But what we felt was, and, and what I'm confident about with this is, we are gonna spend more money in the design, but the construction will ultimately be cheaper. And long-term, we're gonna have a better solution by getting the water main out from literally people's backyards. That, that's a very unique, and from what I understand, only situation like this in the city where the water main is in backyards of the residents, and they've all got, you know, stuff like fences up and everything that's in the way. So we just felt that the best thing to do, bite the bullet, put the investment in and get it done right. So we don't have to deal with this in another fifty years.
And we'll, we'll have communication with the residents, letting them know, or have they been communicated with thus far regarding this?
There will definitely have to be communication, because a part of the effort is going to be rerouting the plumbing system inside their house. So there's gonna be a lot of detailed communication that will have to happen when we get to the point of being closer to construction.
What, what do you think the time period, are they still gonna be researching what the time period would be to do this work?
I can get you a more finite answer on that. I think it's gonna be some time, because part of this is, we have to come to an agreement with the town of Chictowaga on allowing us to put a city water main within the city limit of Chictowaga. So there'll have to be some easements worked out and other legal agreements. So it will take some time. So I, I don't wanna get too detailed with the residents now and then have people forget. I'd rather do that when we're closer to actually starting to do construction.
Okay. Well, thank you for the updates. I really appreciate it. I think it's real helpful in us being able to deliberate, and I have to ask you one hundred and one questions when we come to this point. We can ask you detailed questions. So again, thanks for the effort.
Yeah, no, and thanks for the feedback. I, now that I have a good standard with my staff, I think this will work better for all of us. So thank you.
Any questions, any further questions for the Commissioner? John Heffron, are you here on a, what item are you here on?
Good afternoon, Councilmember Rivera. This is John Heffron. I'm here on item for the Corporation Council. It is a stormwater easement in connection with Rachel Vincent Way. I believe it is in the agenda under Corporation Council, Buffalo Sewer Authority easement, Rachel Vincent Way. It's also Colvin Estates. It's that residential development street that's going in on the former railroad elevated right-of-way mound between Colvin and Sterren. It's already significantly progressed. And I think that this stormwater easement was required by the Buffalo Sewer Authority in connection with more effectively managing the additional stormwater or rainwater runoff that will occur as a result of the imminent Phase Three of the development, residential development along Rachel Vincent Way.
Okay. Any questions from the council member regarding this item? I think it's marked for approval. Any questions? Thank you very much. Commissioner Kevin Helfer?
Thank you, everybody.
Good afternoon, members of the council. How are you?
We're doing well, thank you. I'm doing well.
I'm here with Commissioner Ronaldo. In terms of the item that we filed with Buffalo firefighter retirement incentive program, as you know, we call it the BRIC program. Your honorable bodies approved a handful of these previous. When I have, along with the Commissioner today, three more that we are seeking your approval on. This was negotiated into the contract that we worked on a few years ago, and it's a significant savings to the city of Buffalo. As you know, members apply for two oh seven A, and Dr. Hughes is acknowledged from occupational health that they'll never be able to fight a fire again or work for the Fire Department. And until they receive two oh seven A benefits, they are eligible to stay on the payroll, tax-free, until they're seventy years old. So we've worked this out as part of the union negotiations. And before you today are three agreements. One for a gentleman by the name of Napoleon Johnson, another for Reed Safron, and another for Ronaldo Parker. So we are hoping that you will approve these, and if you have any questions, we're here to answer.
Commissioner, how many folks like these three individuals do we have within both police and fire?
I can't answer that question on police. I could only answer it on fire. But we have approximately twenty, after these three approvals, there's approximately twenty-one or twenty-two more firefighters who are on longer, long-term disability, that we are encouraging them to sit down with the union, sit down with us, sit down with the Fire Department and the fiscal analysts, and talk about how this is mutually beneficial. So approximately a little more than twenty more long-term members on disability.
Okay. And for these three officers or firemen, what would the savings be to the city? I have to believe it's the tens of thousands.
If I could, let me just use, let's say Ronaldo Parker. And, and you should have this as your agreement. It's the last page of the agreement, where we do the financial calculations. Ronaldo Parker is a firefighter who will retire with a pension of seventy-four thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars under this BRIC program. The current salary right now, tax-free, that he would be receiving is eighty-six thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. So when you subtract it, the difference is eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. And then, and all these, we put in seventy-three hundred dollars for, for taxes, because when they retire, they will have to pay federal income tax. So Mr. Parker currently, right now, is earning eighty-six thousand dollars. And under this program, we will be paying nineteen thousand dollars. So that's a significant savings, along with the savings of no longer having to contribute to the pension and social security as well.
Well, I think, I think there's a great savings to the city to incentivize these officers, both in the Fire and Police Department, to take the opportunity of this incentive. It's a great savings to the city of Buffalo. So I'd like to see that expanded. The mayor's talking about incentivizing people to retire. And this is a perfect example of what we should be doing.
This is a very good example, and this works. It's, there's definitely mutual benefit here as well. As you know, when a person is out on disability, they're subjected to home confinement. They can't go out during, you know, nine to five all day long. So that's, you know, one of the benefits is, as well as, pretty tough to even go on a vacation. Something that they would be violating home confinement. So there's definitely mutual benefit here. And it was, as I said, as you recall, a couple of years ago, when we brought the, the contract before the Common Council, you know, part of that contract was based on the premise of, you know, if they work with us for savings, you know, that will help fund some of the cost of the contract. And I think that, you know, this has worked out very well, and I'm glad that this will take us up to approximately, I believe, eight or nine now that we will have done. And we are in the process of meeting with ten more. We met with three today. We got seven more on Wednesday to meet with, as well as subsequently into the future.
Great. Any questions for the Commissioner? Councilmember Rashid Wyatt?
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, how, how do you, you said they have to stay in the house from nine to five every day?
Correct. Yes. Part of, anytime when a member is off disability, they, they are under, the law says that you have to be home while you're disabled during, during your tour. As you know, the tour is the twenty-four hour tour now. But when people go to long-term disability, that means they've been on disability for over a year, it reverts to a day schedule.
Wow.
Eight to five to be, I think I said nine to five, it's eight to five.
Eight to five?
Yes.
Now, now, some of these guys have been off for, it's not been months, has it? Has it been years? Or is it, or am I misunderstanding?
No, you're not misunderstanding. It, it, it rages. For instance, Mr. Parker had a significant injury and won't be coming back to work. And our doctor agrees with that, and he's been less than a year. And then you have some that are, are going through the process. They do apply to the state for a two oh seven eight disability. And that process sometimes takes very long, and they can, they can apply for a performance of duty disability, as well as an accidental disability. And if they're denied on each one of those, they get a chance to apply again. So in essence, they got four different applications. So that process could take a lot of time.
Okay. Is this, is there a similar program for the police?
That I can't speak to. The only reason that I know this is because I was on part of, I was one of the members in the negotiating team, and you know, that was specific to fire.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the Commissioner? Thank you very much, Commissioner. That one's marked approved.
Thank you, members.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners online?
So you have an item from MIS, and we have Daryl Springer. I can see I have to speak on it, and also Commissioner Parker for late fun as well.
Go ahead, Daryl.
Good afternoon, everyone. We have an item that we're filing to extend a third-year, one-year agreement with Socrata and Tyler Technologies. This agreement would allow us to continue operations with the Open Data Platform, which all of you, I'm sure, are aware is one of the essential pieces for our open government, to allow citizens to come in and grab data at their pleasure, and do analytical work with it, or whatever it is that they want to do to have transparency.
Councilmember Rashid Wyatt?
Mr. Chair, Daryl, the information relating to the Police Department, is that separate from MIS? Or is it, do they run their own data information?
It's a good question, Councilman. I believe the police on their website have a number of links that send you to analytical and police reporting. And those are provided, I believe, by the Erie County Crime Unit.
Got you.
They assist with us in that endeavor. That is separate from the Open Data Platform, but I believe we do have some policing stats available on Open Data.
Okay. If, if we weren't, oh, gosh. Yeah, we switch screens. For some reason, it takes me out. If we were not to approve this, would we have serious problems?
If we did not read up our contract, this isn't what's called an on-premises software. It's called a SaaS hosting software. So we pay for it as a service. So we would no longer have access to it. So it would be a very large gap in the transparency that we've been trying to do for.
So we have to do this?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Daryl.
Thank you, members.
If there are no, if there are no other Commissioners?
So you also have Otis Barker, and we have some representatives from police as well.
Okay, good. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Barker.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you, oh, okay, good. Good afternoon, honorable body. We're looking to do our, our usual agreement with the Workforce Corporation of Buffalo and Erie County for the year summer youth internship program. This year, we're looking to spend one million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars on youth employment for the summer months.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Okay. Otis, I'm, I'm glad to see that the kids are still gonna have summer youth. I was really skeptical. I didn't know if we were gonna be able to do it through the pandemic. But one thing I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, is there a protocol for how these kids are gonna be out in the community? I mean, what are we doing to make certain that they're safe and community safe?
Glad you, um, one of the things we, memorandum of agreement with each site to provide social distancing plan, as well as masks and other PPE equipment that would be needed for the young people to be able to do their jobs. Also, we have quite a few, we're about a hundred and thirty-five work sites, and of those, a good majority of them are gonna be doing virtual work, which creative this year. Trust me, we're working every single day of the week putting this thing together. Because, you know, we're really out of our, our element. Really come, working, working together with all these work sites, really coming up with some really nice ideas for the young people. So there'll be earn and learn over the summer, which is a term of the program.
So, so whose responsibility is it to provide them with the PPE?
It'll be the work site.
The work site?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, I'm glad they see that it's still gonna take place. I was a little concerned, but we know our young people need those dollars every year for whatever needs they do, especially many of them that come from the inner city certainly need those resources. So thank you, and big ups to you. If there's anything I can do, let me know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. We have the Buffalo Police Department here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today, we have myself, Lieutenant Losi, our Budget Examiner, John Stancheck, and Deputy Commissioner Barbara Larcher.
Okay. And you're here on the contract for the security for City Hall?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right. Would you give us a brief summary of how you came to, obviously, there was a proposal. Can you just give us a summary of, you know, the people that applied? And I think most importantly, there was a question as to whether or not the current security company had applied. We found out that they didn't. Is there any reason that you know of why they didn't apply?
We had, you know, we've had, you know, no, no conversations with them. They, they, we can't really speculate as to why they did that. They were given the opportunity, along with the three companies that didn't reply. So we, we are at a loss to explain that ourselves.
Yeah, I think we're all at a loss. There were a number of questions, specifically Rashid Wyatt. I had a number of questions, and I, those questions were answered?
Yeah, I did get the, the, what they submitted to the council, and I went through it, and it did answer many of the questions. Still, we're just a kind of baffled that GS four did not respond or were not interested. I would have liked a little bit more as far as what the contract amounts would be for the next, because this is a one-year contract?
Yes. Yeah, this is a one-year contract with three, with the option to renew three years if both parties agree.
So they can renew for three years?
Yes.
Okay. But the next renewal will be for one year, or we're talking about the next renewal is for three years?
One year at a time.
Okay. Okay. So we're gonna definitely say from the analysis that you gave, but I would have liked to see what the cost would be for those consecutive years. Because to me, it seems as though we're gonna miss something with GS four moving up. They created a lot of the protocols of working with the city, and now it seems like we're almost gonna start from scratch. But, you know, we're gonna take your judgment and hope that they can move in seamlessly without any interruption, because we know that initially, we did have interruptions. People weren't happy. But then we moved through that very quickly, working with GS four, which seemed to me do a great job interacting with us, as well as with the, the residents and people who are coming inside City Hall. So I'm just hopeful that that process can continue to be seamless, as what people have experienced over the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, councilmember Wingle.
Yeah, real, real, real quick question. I believe councilmember Wyatt brings up a good point and my question is very, uh, fairly simple. Is the protocols that were, uh, in place by G4S, were those, are those protocols proprietary?
No, I, I, I don't believe they are. I, I believe, uh, we've, uh, over the last, uh, few years, we've, uh, we've, uh, worked, the police department is kind of almost like a consultant with G4S. And when, uh, when problems arose, we, we got together mutually and, and, and dealt with these. Uh, just recently, uh, we've been over there, you know, adding to the social distancing on the, uh, front, uh, metal detectors. Uh, but I don't believe any of that, it would be proprietary. That's just the six-foot distancing. Uh, those protocols that mo- most businesses and organizations are putting into place now.
I guess the, the, the clear question would be, do we have a copy of the protocols? So that when this new security team comes in, they can seamlessly, as Councilman Wyatt put it, seamlessly, uh, fill in those gaps that were, um, upheld by the, the, uh, prior security firm.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
I think we have guidelines that, that the security company, whichever security company that is, that has the contract has to follow, not necessarily the specific protocols, um, for G4S.
So we don't have the manual that they used? We don't know what their protocols were, their standard operating procedures for the officers that were policing or in, or securing City Hall?
They have a list of responsibilities that they have to follow and I believe those are, are listed in this request for a proposal. And they do have a list of, of routine things to follow for City Hall and for the Dylan.
So basically we give them a list of expectations and it's up to them to create their own protocol moving forward as to how they're going to, uh, meet those expectations.
Yeah.
I believe so. And then they'll be monitored and Captain Ronaldo is the contact person in case there's any questions or concerns about protocols that they are following. He is the contact person that works closely with them at both locations.
Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I guess my question is more along the lines of hoping this is a seamless transition as well.
I hear you.
Yep. Um, on page nine, they said.
Right.
You hear me now?
A little better, yes.
A little bit, okay. Thank you. I just had a question along the, uh, staffing levels.
Exiting narrator.
Sorry, I'm having some trouble over on this side. Uh, staffing levels, it seems like they have, um, sixteen proposed, um, security guards or, or so it looks like one-site supervisor, um, couple part-time and fourteen security guards. Is that, uh, along the same lines as, uh, G4S, uh, staffing levels at?
Zoom meeting window.
Yes, yes. The, the, when we compared the, uh, proposal of the Secure Remedy Company, they, uh, they were the same numbers as we had the last few years with, uh, G4S.
Yeah, the actual coverage, the number of officers at the front and the back and the side door will be the same once City Hall is fully open.
Mute. Currently unmuted.
Thank you. I share the concerns of many of the council members. We want to make sure that, uh, we don't lose anything as a resort of uh, switching over in terms of manpower, um, uh, the procedures that they had, um, that we, I believe they develop over a period of time. I hope we follow many of the procedures that they have established. Uh, I don't know if we have a manual or if they provided you with any information that would be helpful in the transition.
I do, aren't they coming in for like hands-on training and they're going to go?
Uh, you, you're referring to, uh, the, the incumbent or the, the, the new, the, the new people that are coming in? I'm referring to retrain, uh, on our site if this becomes approved. And they'll, they'll go over the specifics of the building and the, the, uh, I guess our protocols that we've established over these last few years, once they, they can see what they're being trained to do.
Will there be interaction between G4 and remedy before G4 leaves?
Um, I, I can't really speak to that. I, we, we would have no way to, we would have to, I, I, I suppose the way the contract is set up, one ends and one starts. Uh, there, there is no overlap there is.
Mr. Chair, that you, you, you literally just hit the nail on the head. I was just going to inquire, uh, two things. First of all, is there a time period where G4S can basically help smooth out that transition? And two, uh, is it possible for us to conduct some type of exit interview? So that G4S can give us those things that maybe the new firm, uh, new security detail needs to know coming in that maybe they've learned over these last, uh, several years, anecdotally speaking. Uh, otherwise I think the transition, no matter how much materials, paperwork, SOPs we have is not going to matter unless there is a handing of the baton, not just a leaving and a new one coming in from scratch.
Um, I don't know if that can be done. I, 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 we're, we're very unsure if that can be done with the way the contract is set up. Um, it, it doesn't provide, um, I know I was involved with the, uh, the, the changing of security companies at the Broadway Market. You know, one ended and the next one started. Um, it would, it would be great and we would, we would facilitate, um, that changeover, but I don't think we can compel anyone to come in early or the other company to stay over. Uh, it was not part of the, the contract.
Yeah, I, I understand it was not part of the initial contract, but I'm asking, okay, let me just be real clear then. Can you please ask G4S if they would be willing to stay? Just so that they can even anecdotally give some pointers, give some institutional knowledge, historical knowledge to the new system, new, the new firms, so that when they come in, they don't have to basically recreate the way. I mean, if we're already saving money with the new contract, uh, can we just inquire whether or not that they'd be willing to do that? And if, if it's, if it's just an extension of their contract for a couple of weeks, then why can't we just ask?
Um, that would be a contractual and legal question that we'd have to look into very quickly to see what, how that would occur. Um, I've never had two contracts overlapping for service. Um, so I, I would have to do some looking into that to see and check with the law department, what would be involved in doing that. Um, and with the budget office, if we're gonna be paying two companies or to be on staff for whatever period of time, uh, we'd have to get some answers on that.
Yeah, um, I guess I, I'm not saying have, you know, thirty-two people on patrol in City Hall. What I'm saying is, uh, see what that will look like, see what the feasibility is. Uh, regarding having, uh, G4S having some of their crews stay, stay, extend that contract just so that we can have some type of, um, passing of the baton, some type of smooth transition, some type of easier succession than to just end one and start the other. I think that would be very, very wise of us so that we're not recreating the wheel and spinning our wheels all over again with the new security, uh, company.
Well, we have how many days left in this contract before? We have until July first, is that it?
Yes, it sends up midnight on June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. Is there anything to prevent, um, uh, Secure Remedy with meeting with G4 during this period of time before the end of the contract?
Um, the, we don't have a contract to bring them in, so I'm not sure what that would.
I don't think they, uh, they're going to get a contract. So I, I mean, it's to their benefit. Um, if I'm coming in and I'm gonna get a contract, then I'm willing to go in a little early and to find out, you know, how things are gonna be that much easier for our men. So I think this is a perfect time to bring them in. Uh, I don't think that Secure Remedy would have a problem with it at all. I mean.
They may not, we never, we've never reached out to them about that.
Uh, is there something, I mean, is there a reason why you don't reach out to them at this point?
Well, we, we were kind of waiting for the approval before we, you know.
Well, we're gonna vote on the approval. We're gonna recommend it today. I mean, more or less you'll know today that we're going to approve it. Uh, I think that everybody that's here is, uh, gonna vote to approve it at this point. Um, so we have about five days bef- before the end of the contract and we're hopeful that Remedy can meet with G4 to discuss the transition.
We'll make contact with them as soon as we leave there and.
Thank you very much. I think that's what we were all.
Well, yeah.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm very hopeful that this works out, but right now from this conversation, I'm not really comfortable. Um, but you know, our backs are against the wall as they always are when we have to make these decisions. Um, like I said, G4, for whatever reasons, I would have thought someone would have had a conversation because I think they did a pretty good job. Um, I know we're definitely looking out for the cause, um, but we certainly don't wanna upset the apple cart, especially during this pandemic that people are coming in through City Hall and there's a whole different process that they're not aware of. And even if people have been coming through City Hall, it may be a different process. And people may be frustrated behind this, but we're gonna have a one-year contract. I hope we don't have to go through this again because again, we, we're trying to have a continuity on people. This was new to a lot of people. G4 did make it a lot easier in dealing with, um, the residents that came in and out. Um, but right now, this, you know, I, uh, Councilmember Wingle, I think kind of said it. You know, there should be some type of continuity that the people who are on the ground had some conversation, um, with the people who are coming in. Um, but I don't, maybe that's not even possible because they felt like they were left out. I don't know. Um, but I'm hopeful that if this happens again, and I hope it doesn't happen for another five years. Um, we have a smoother way to go through this transition, um, where it can be, just as we said, smooth. And the, the nuances that the other company have learned, they will share with the new company. I know they're not under contract, but I would hope that, um, as far as a, a level of professionalism, professional ethics, um, just to have that conversation wouldn't cost us a dying. It's just, you know, professional courtesy that, hey, we'll give you some good information, we'll walk out the door and then our deal will be done. I don't think that should cost us a nickel, but again, if we can work that out, that's great. If not, I'm real hopeful that, um, this will work out for us because right now I'm not getting a warm and perfect feeling. Thank you.
Listen, Mr. Mr. Chair, if I could just say, if I could just say this, I, I, I'm, I, I, I full-heartedly, absolutely, unequivocally agree with Councilmember Wyatt. Listen, uh, we're paying these folks. And I just don't, you know, if there's an evaluation of G4S, uh, uh, we need to have some type of exit interview so that people know what they've gotten for the last several years with G4S. And I don't, I don't, I just don't for the life of me understand. It was just a question. We, we just need to ask G4S. And like you said, Councilmember Rivera, if they'd be willing, if they'd be willing, they just need to be willing to give the oncoming agency information that will make the transition smoother for our constituents, for the people of the city of Buffalo. We are paying these people. Why can't they give us some type of document? I mean, it should not be proprietary is what I was trying to suggest before. The information should not be proprietary to G4S as this is our building. We're paying them contractually to secure it and to keep the workers and the constituents, the residents and the visitors to City Hall safe. So what I'm saying is these last few days is not a two, three, four weeks. It's just a few more days. Why don't we get them to, uh, come up with some type of transitional, uh, uh, phase so that they can phase out and the new team can phase in. That way everyone is, is, is clear on what the expectations are for the new team and the old team coming out. We don't need a full team on. Uh, even right now, we don't need a full team on, but just someone or a few people there to help with this transition. So that Councilmember Wyatt feels better, so that I feel better, so that Councilmember Rivera feels better, so that my constituents and my residents, when they come to City Hall, they feel better that we are fully secured and there is a ironclad plan to keep them, uh, safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, if there are, if there's no objection from the council member, the motion would then be to approve. Uh, so Deputy Commissioner, you can probably go ahead and make that call and with confidence that, um, that Remedy will get the contract. And hopefully there'll be a smooth transition between, uh, G4 and Remedy.
Just to state, um, all, you know, all the conversations that I've had, they've secured remedy so far. Everything we've asked them, they've obliged. They've been coming forward. So if we reach out to them on another point, we, you know, hopefully they will, you know, cause everything so far that they've done with us, you know, over the last couple of weeks, all the correspondence I've had with them, they've been very agreeable, easy to work with. So.
Good. We'll probably see him in City Hall this week then.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. All right. Um, any other commissioners in that? We'll start right from the top. Bring up the agenda. All right. Item number up in this. Items one through five approve. Item six Mastin, report of sale eight forty-eight Northland. Councilmember Wingle?
Counselor, I'm, I was looking, I was pinching in on the screen because it's so small. Uh, yeah. Leave those, um, leave them open so, so tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, number seven approve. Eight is in Mastin as well. Eight, nine are both in Mastin?
Yeah, without rec.
Just another. Without rec? All right. Uh, items ten, eleven, twelve to finance. Let's see. Ten, eleven, twelve to finance. Item. No.
No, twelve.
Finance. Twelve is a receive and file. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen to finance. Eighteen. Let's see, management system, extension of contract, that's an approve. Nineteen, nineteen through, scroll down. Nineteen through twenty-six are approved. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine to civil service. Thirty is approved. Thirty-one, receive and file. Uh, item thirty-three, that's an approved, that retirement incentive program, that's approved. Thirty-four to civil service. Corporation counsel estate related easement, that's an approve. Thirty-six Fillmore.
Um, excuse me, Councilmember, um, Rivera, can we go back to item thirty-two, I think?
Thirty-two?
I think it was, um, yeah, the retirement payout for Chief Patrick Pascal. Let's see. It's a
Which one?
This is the one from BPD. Okay. Is it? Okay, this is the one that, um, uh, Commissioner Helfer spoke on earlier today?
No, it's not. This thirty-two is the, uh, uh, security at City Hall.
And thirty-one.
Thirty-one is retirement payout for, oh, that's, why is that marked receiving file?
That's what I'm wondering.
The retirement payout for Chief Patrick, that should be an approved. That's a retirement payout, the incentives?
Yes. Great. Thank you.
That should be approved. Thank you for catching that. Uh, thirty-six in Fillmore?
Approve.
Approve. Thirty-seven. Summer youth approve. Thirty-eight finance, thirty-nine to finance. Uh, items forty through forty-four, receive and file. Item forty-five to CD.
Majority leader?
Yes.
Can we go back to number, um, thirty-nine?
Okay, go back to item thirty-nine. BM, BMHA requested.
Can we, can we send that without rec?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to send without rec. Um, let's see. Item forty-five to C D, forty-six. Police oversight. A report for council concerning police, okay, police oversight. Forty-eight is a receiving file, forty-nine. What are you doing forty-nine? Oh, forty-nine is receiving file, fifty, fifty-one. Fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-two are receiving file. Fifty-three to finance. Fifty-four University District Civilian Oversight Board.
Okay, that go, can, can we send that to um, Community Development?
Send to C D, yeah. Submissions, uh. Finance, number one is adopt. Two to legislation. Three is a receiving file.
Why are we sending that to legislation?
Cash flow and actual. And projected.
That, I think that should be receiving file.
I'm sorry, what was it Karen?
Um, unless, if we're finished with it, we could receive and file it, but if, um, the council member wants additional information, then. But I'm seeing that it's already in finance, so. Yeah, maybe receive and file, but, yeah.
Yes, receive file, thank you.
Receiving file. Resolutions, uh, let's see, support for stabbing N F T A Route twenty-seven Delaware Maston. What would you like done with that, uh, Farrelletto? You just want it not? It's Farrelletto on, or, or Wingle?
Yeah, I'm still here.
You wanna speak on that one, you just want us to adopt it?
Yeah, well, I would like for us to adopt it, it is, it is really regarding the information that we received regarding the county. Uh, going through their measures to reduce their budget uh, gap. Um, they're supposedly gonna be going through some things that, one of which will include the closing of the, um, um, uh. Uh, and we would like to ensure that, uh, the N F T A considers a route back out since it was. Um, terminated in two thousand and fourteen. To have that route go out to the Alden Center that will allow uh, residents and families to still visit. Their, uh, their loved ones who have been incarcerated, who are being held by the, by the government. So we can, I mean, if no one objects, we can adopt, it's really just to send the requisition to uh, N F T A to consider.
Okay.
Uh, and again, this is, this is, this is council member Farrelletto's uh, resolution. Um, but the ultimate decision would be to adopt, so that we can get them to consider this uh, uh, now versus later.
Majority Leader?
Yes, Joe.
The number Scanlon.
Well, Chris, it comes from Scanlon, go ahead.
Thank you, Majority Leader, if there's no objection to the, the sponsors, I'd like to add my name to that resolution.
Yeah, I think it's a great resolution, get the people out through Alden, yeah, you might. Yes.
So, I mean, uh, that's myself, Councilmember Scanlon, and Councilmember Nowakowski.
My name to it as well.
Uh, that's, and that's, okay, Councilmember Rivera. I ain't Councilmember Wyatt, so that's, that's five council members. Yeah, if that's five customers, we can adapt it now and um, discuss it later, but you know, we already have five sponsors then.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fifty-seven illegal dumping in Fillmore.
Thank you, Majority Leader, I would like this adopted and the result sent to D P W. I just wanted you to reiterate, the Fillmore District is not a dumping zone. Um, residents in my neighborhoods and, and communities work very hard to keep it clean. And there is pervasive uh, illegal dumping, pepping at Viaducts. The, the first is the Howard Street, uh, near Fillmore, Clinton Street, French Urban Box and um, Ferguson. Viaducts and the Tiv Street Bridge, and I would like this, um, just to go to D P W so I can work with. The Commissioner Finn on getting cameras uh, for those Viaducts and for signs, thank you.
That remainder to D P W. Fifty-seven adopt, fifty-eight adopt, remainder to legislation. Fifty-nine and.
Majority Leader?
Yes.
It's Councilmember Scanlon, just if I could, um, address item number fifty-eight.
Item fifty-eight, go right ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned that the council, if, for the council, if we head down this path with legislation of this type now. I could be wrong, but um, and maybe Corporation Council can correct, can correct me if I am, but it's my understanding that. Um, it is required to, we are required to have a judge sign off on a no-knock warrant. And that the burden of evidence on the law enforcement agency is fairly heavy. And in order for the, uh, judge to issue such a warrant, you need more than just probable cause, you have to have substantial evidence. And um, like, one of my concerns is, um, and I'm not sure if we can even do this at the city level, what indi- what implications it has. If it has to be referendum, something to the state, I'm not certain of that yet, I've been looking into it, but. Um, I'm concerned about any potential um, reduction, reducing any of the discretion of the judges that we have. Um, I think we saw earlier this year some of the unintended consequences of. In, of toying with a discretion that the judges have with, with regards to the New York State Legislature's bail reform initiatives. That they implemented at the beginning of the year, um, obviously, we saw some issues arise from that, we had to have, we've had conversations. Here at the council level, but they've also had to have them at the state level about, maybe things went too far, too fast. And uh, they needed to pull things back and address those situations. Another concern I have is for the safety of the officers themselves. I, I hope we can all agree that unfortunately, there, there are, there are bad people in the world and some people that have a total disregard. For human life. And when, if you have officers showing up to serve a warrant and they're knocking and waiting. Um, that some of those people with that disregard for human life have faced with the possibility of court or possibly prison. Um, could be sitting on the other side of a door waiting to open fire on some of those officers, preparing for that. Um, in particular, right now, with the attitude some people have towards law enforcement officers and, you know, the contempt by some people. That they have for law enforcement agencies, um, that is something I, I great, I fear greatly. Is the, the well-being and the safety of the officers serving those warrants, and then finally, another concern I have is. Um, the destruction of evidence. Um, if you have, uh, a group of officers showing up to, um, serve a warrant. And they're knocking, I, I think it provides opportunity for, um, those people that they're looking for to destroy evidence. And therefore ultimately making our streets unsafe, if these are people who I mentioned. Um, have complete disregard for life, whether it be through the, um. The distribution of drugs or other issues, um, you're, you're providing them an opportunity to stay on the street. By, through destruction of, uh, uh, evidence. So I have some serious, serious concerns about, um, the elimination of no-knock warrants, because again. Um, at the end of the day, you need a judge to sign off on them anyway, if there are officers out there just kicking down doors.
I'm sorry?
I think we lost them.
We just lose them completely?
I think we lost them.
Well, well, he, uh, well, he comes back on, you probably log back on. I, I understand, uh, the concern that Councilmember Chris Scanlon has. I worked in narcotics unit and I went before judges to get no-knock warrants. Uh, and many times, it was because you're trying to prevent. Uh, the destruction of evidence, the tampering of evidence. You're trying to protect the police officer at the same time, you don't know what's behind the door. When you're executing a search warrant, whether they're armed, whether they're dogs. Um, so there are many reasons, um, you do get no-knock warrants, and I really don't know if it's a good idea. To limit the discretion of a judge in cases like this, the, the police officer goes before the judge in his chambers. And he explains why they need a no-knock warrant, and the judge just didn't grant them. There has to be a reason, and many times, the police officer, officers give, or the detectives give the, the judge. The cause or the reasonable cause or the proof. Why they need a no-knock warrant, so I'm concerned. Um, reducing or limiting judges' discretion, I know I worked narcotics for many years, executed hundreds of search warrants, and I know. Uh, what to expect and what not to expect when you hit a house. And a no-knock warrant is, is a tool that law enforcement has used. And has been very instrumental, I mean, we've seen people try to destroy evidence while we were ramming doors, while we were. Going through the windows, they were destroying, flushing drugs down the toilet. So those are the things that police officers and detectives face when they're executing search warrants, so I think we need to take a really good look at this. And not limited to discretion, there should be times where, you know, the judge will play deny, you know, say, no, I'm not gonna issue a no-knock warrant. Um, you'll have to knock on it, but for, there are many instances where they should grant no-knock warrants. Because of the reasons that, uh, Councilmember Scanlon mentioned, uh, I worked in narcotics units, so I know. They're up against when they're executing search warrants, so, uh, Councilmember Rashid Wyatt.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and, um, I understand exactly what you all are talking about. And I think this is, and I can't speak for Councilmember, Council President Pridgen, I'm just saying from my perspective. Um, we have to revisit a lot of the tactics that we've been using over the past. Um, I know many of you have heard Breonna Taylor and how there was no-knock warrant and she was killed. Um, and I think again, you know, we wanna make sure we protect our police officers, absolutely. But we also wanted to protect, um, citizens from these type of situations where those unintended consequences occur. Um, so again, you know, I think that throughout the country, we're looking at reforms. And I think if nothing else, there should be a conversation about those things and the information that you provided. Excellently gives people the information to make better decisions about, is this something that we keep, is this something that we modify? So I think the things that Council President has put forth, I definitely support, at least having the conversation to revisit. The process, just like with the, um, the riot police. Um, we may have to look at how that occurred and what happened, because those are reforms that people are calling for, so again. Um, the information that you're providing, um, uh, Majority Leader, as far as those issues and how it's even done. It's more than I ever even understood. So I think, again, having those conversations to look at what's good, what's not so good, what we may need to tweak. I think is appropriate, and I hope that we can at least do that, have those conversations to see, um, what makes sense. Um, because at the end of the day, um, we do have a young woman who was dead, and a no-knock warrant was part of that problem. And, um, we, you just can't, we just can't continue to go through those down that path, that someone dies for something that. Maybe if we had talked about it, or maybe a different process or different questions asked. Outcome, but again, I think that a lot of things that we're proposing are measures to look at reforms and how we can do better. Um, to make sure, the number one, I, I, I wanna make sure our officers, absolutely. But I wanna also make sure that the residents who have been affected by some of the miscalculations of officers. Or even mis-training of officers, um, to continue, because we've suffered enough. And again, reasonable people can come talk and talk about those reforms in a way that makes sense. And not taking, choosing one or the other, but making sure we have a happy medium so that police are safe and residents are taken advantage of, thank you.
Councilmember Joe Glenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have to agree with, uh, what Mr. Scanlon said, and also with what, uh, Mr. Wyatt said. I do believe that these things should be on the table, I think that there should be discussion. Um, about what we can and what we can't do. Um, I, for one, don't believe that we should defang the police department and the judiciary. By not allowing them, uh, to have no-knock warrants, as Mr. Rivera said. From his time in the Buffalo Police Department, you know, there are bad people that we're trying to stop. In each and every one of our neighborhoods, and you know, if you have to knock on the door and wait. That gives people an opportunity to destroy, uh, evidence. Um, you know, and, and I think that that's not wise in the long run, so I won't be supporting this resolution per se. Um, I'm open for discussion and talking about it. Um, but I think that if we were ever to do away with no-knock warrants, uh, that it would. Um, also, what I would like to say is, is that, you know, with these discussions of other police issues. That are going to be in front of us at tomorrow's meetings, I think that we need to be very, very careful. With how we're moving forward, um, you know, because I will tell you this, in my district. Uh, I have had a, a large number of people who are frightened right now. Um, they're frightened because of, uh, the gang and lawlessness that they see in much of the city of Buffalo. Um, they're concerned about the A T Vs and fireworks that are in each and every one of our neighborhoods. Um, they're concerned that the police are not able to address these issues the way that they want them to be addressed. Uh, I'm not sure if it was my district, uh, or if it was the west side, uh, uh, that this happened. But in my Riversideers, uh, Facebook page, they said that there was a fire last night, um, and that somebody's house burnt down. Um, you know, uh, I haven't been able to get an answer yet, I don't think it was in the north district, but. Um, you know, this is a concern that people have, and everybody thinks it's funny, fireworks, A T Vs, you know, whatever. Until something bad happens, and so my concern is, is that while everything is okay to be on the table. Making immediate changes and, you know, leading people to believe that by doing something, we're gonna be able to fix. A problem, and we're only gonna add to a bigger problem and a problem with quality of life issues in our districts. And among our residents, so, uh, I'm not keen on this resolution or some of the other ones.
Mr. Chair. Uh, we have, um, Councilmember Scanlon, then Councilmember Wingle.
Thank you, thank you, co- thank you, Majority Leader, um, I think Councilmember Wyatt makes a very good point. And I completely agree with him that everything needs to be on the table for discussion. Um, I don't think we can turn ourselves off to anything at this point, um, obviously, this is a tumultuous time period right now. And I think we have to be willing to listen to everyone involved and have very difficult conversations and come up with some remedies. Um, my, my biggest concern right now with this, um, this resolution and where it stands right now is that. Um, this isn't asking for just a conversation to take place, there's, um, a res- a resolve in there. That asks the Corporation Council to draft a law. To codify this into, to, to draft a new ordinance for this, um. So if this, I would, I'd feel much more comfortable of this, I'm not in favor of the eliminating the no-knock warrants, but. If we wanna have a conversation, um, I think it'd be wiser to send it straight to committee than adopt the resolves where an ordinance is being drafted. And we're not gonna have the conversation, thank you.
Who else wanted to speak, Wingle?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Uh, first of all, we, we have to understand that the tragic and unfortunate and untimely death of Breonna Taylor. Was an absolute murder. Um, we have to look at the merits of the case where you have, uh, Officer, or Ex-Officer Hankton. Who, uh, with other officers were entering a house unannounced. And even, uh, then they, uh, there were twenty-five bullets fired in that exchange. We also know that, uh, Breonna Taylor's partner, uh, Mr. Walker, he called nine-one-one. Because he thought and suspected that this was a burglary. Um, I'm looking at it from both sides, the judge got information. And, and I'm gonna be very careful, because I, I know that, um. This can, can be a little touchy here, but I know that the judge had to make a decision on whether or not they were going to grant. Uh, this no-knock warrant for Breonna Taylor's home, now watch this, the problem that I see here. Is that the person who they were looking for was ten miles away and had some type of package delivered there, and I know we all know the merits of. Everything that was been reported so far, uh, but my issue is this judge gave them the okay for a no-knock warrant. For this house. With those facts. Whatever facts they have made, they may have had. The judge granted. The no-knock warrant. And then, the officer with a complete lack of value for life. Opened fire when Mr. Walker tried to defend his home. So we have a situation here where, you know, there are several, several components in place, and I am. Looking forward to the discussion, not ready to yet codify anything. But I am looking forward to the discussion and to the input of our constituents and our residents to see how they would like to weigh in. On this particular issue, but at the, at, at this time right now, please, 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 uh, let's discuss this, uh, very thoroughly. And, and committee, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other council members? Any other councilmembers? Is there somebody here from councilmember? Pridgen's office? Somebody online?
No, sir. Council President still hasn't joined us yet. He said that he might be missing.
Um, we can send this without recommendation. We'll let him know that there are a number of councilmembers that would like to see it go to committee, discuss further before we even. There's just a lot of questions. Unfortunately, every case is different. What happened with Breonna, I don't know all the, you know, what happened in county, in the judges' chambers, the reasons for the no knock warrant. I, I really don't know. I condolences to the family. Mistakes are made, let me tell you, in search warrants sometimes. Believe it or not, they actually raid the wrong houses. High school detectives hit wrong houses on search warrants. Mistakes are made. Um, you try to limit those mistakes, but they're always going to be made. But I think we, we side on the side of caution when it comes to public safety and the safety of police officers. Um, primarily and the general public as well. So from the judges on to the detective, we need to be very careful when we issue these warrants. Uh, do they merit no knock or do they? But that decision the judge will make, but if we take that decision away from a judge, um, we, we need the police department by doing that. Um, so, um, we'll send it without recommendation. We'll talk to council president and we'll ask him, but only to send it to committee where we can have further discussion on this. Is that fine with everybody? Okay. Councilmember Rashid Wyatt? You're muted.
Majority Leader, I believe, um, there's a task force that is supposed to be established. Um, where the council will have one representative. And, um, I guess, uh, we have to have some conversation on how that's supposed to work. I know we're some, uh, providing legislation right now. I don't know if they'll be debating these items or, or how we're going to do it. But I think we need to have a conversation about how that will work. Um, because maybe that will assist in some of the clarification and dialogue and even the tweaking of, um, what may be, um, a more appropriate measure. Um, I know this can't go through without, this would have to be part of the state's, right? Consideration as well for something like this?
Good question. Law Department. Law Department, though?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah. With regard to codifying this, is this something that supersedes state law?
Um, I don't think we have, from my understanding, any, um, authority as it relates to, um, writing laws, uh, for warrants. That's definitely, you know, penal law and state law. Um, so it wouldn't be something that we would be doing. It probably would most likely be something, a recommendation that we can make, um, for a fair amendment. But I don't think we, um, common council can do so. Uh, I would look into it, but I don't think we have the authority to do so.
No, because you would actually go to a, either a city court judge or a county court judge or a state court judge.
Yeah, and I believe all those things would be, um, is already probably codified under penal law. And the city does not write penal law. Um, so I, I, I don't think we would be able to do that. But I mean, I could still look if, you know, the council members want a certain, you know, like a, a, a definite answer tomorrow.
Oh, definitely, like a definite answer. Yes, please. Thank you very much.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I guess the question is, um, I know that the, the chief and the mayor creates policy. Um, but it's our responsibility if we want to codify those policies. And that was, that was one, because you said it goes to a judge, either city court or appeals court judge. That's, that's not within our realm. I thought that was under, under the state possibly.
Right.
Yes, it would probably most likely be under the state and probably you're looking at, and you know, the unified. We don't have any control over either, so I, I doubt it might be something that we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the agenda.
Majority Leader, councilmember Bowman, I think might have fixed his audio issues and he wanted to revisit and speak on item number 56. It's councilmember Noakowski's resolution on illegal dumping.
Okay, go back to item 56.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
No, I just wanted it to be added to the resolution. I, uh, too have some dumping areas and people who's dumping, the park is okay. So I would love a sign and, uh, councilmember Noakowski is gonna, you know, feed me to punch on this one, but it's excellent. Um, I appreciate it. I need help over there in Chiller Park to keep dumping. I had it picked up and then I came back the next day and it looked like they put more. So I just wanted, uh.
You were added to the resolution, yes.
Majority Leader, on item number 56, that's for us. Um, also my audio has not been working, so I had to reboot. Um, I believe that councilman Noakowski said remainder to DPW. However, I do not believe it's going to allow us to send it to that. So we probably can send a remainder to ledge or CD. I would probably assume ledge in that order.
Okay.
Councilmember, if it's your intent to adopt it right off the bat, then we can forward it to DPW through the system if you'd like. So you have the option to do either.
Let's, let's adopt it, please.
Let's do that. Uh, let's see, where are we now? We're, Pridgen appointed there. Uh, item 59 is an adopt. Pridgen. Item 60. What is 30? 60, um, go back to 60. I'm just trying to understand 60, Pridgen defunding police.
Majority Leader, this is a resolution introduced by the council president that is hearing the call, uh, in its various forms to defund the police from constituents in the city of Buffalo. While it understands and accepts that that, uh, term and phrase has many different applications. He wants to then start the discussion with constituents on that. So this resolution calls for people to write in and give their recommendations on what that should be. And it will be something that he considers from now until next budget season.
Councilmember Joseph Gollumbeck.
Thank you. Um, a couple of the concerns that I have with some of these resolutions that are coming in front of us, and I'm not sure which ones I'm going to be supporting, um, and which ones I'm not. But I'm uncomfortable with the, uh, the appearance that what we're doing is, is that we're starting, you know, new committees and new commissions and, uh, new ways of addressing problems in the city of Buffalo with the police department. When in fact, the, um, mayor's office has already been working, the mayor has been working with a group of, uh, individuals, um, to try to address these issues. And I just am uncomfortable with the potential of duplicative, uh, services that are here. Um, one of my concerns is, is that, uh, you know, will the people that are working with the mayor that feel that they're not getting their way then use the council as, you know, the sounding board, um, to try to get their way when in fact, uh, when I watched his press conference a week or so ago, um, he talked about many of the demands that were made by these advocates, um, are not legal. Whether it's the Taylor law, binding arbitration, uh, state law, federal law or whatever. Um, so that's some of the concerns that I have with supporting any of these things. I don't want to give people, uh, the appearance that we're going to be supporting something that is illegal because after all, we do live in a land of laws, uh, law and order. And we have to follow the law just as much as anyone else. Um, you know, when there was the demand to fire the 57 police officers. I mean legally, we couldn't do that even if we wanted to. Um, but when I tried to explain that to people, people felt that because I scream louder or send more emails to you, I'm right and you're wrong. And I think that, you know, I'm uncomfortable with opening up a new venue for people to get misinformation and to have wrong information about what can and cannot happen in the city of Buffalo. Um, you know, I don't believe that we should give people false hope of, over something that we don't have any control. Um, so I, I, I have some concerns over a bunch of these resolutions. I would support all of them going to committee, um, but, uh, I don't support adopting each and every one of them. Thank you.
Councilmember Rashid Wyatt.
I hear clearly what councilmember Gollumbeck is saying, speaking to. But it wasn't, it wasn't fair to us, the citizens, when the riot, uh, police decided that they were going to decide not to be riot police. That wasn't fair either. So I, I understand what you're saying, but how do we balance it out so that, um, fairness is not just, um, subjective, but is, you know, something that we can honestly say and, and make happen? Um, because there were people who were very upset that the riot police said, we're, we're going to, we're going to decide to stop, uh, resign our positions. Um, that wasn't right in the midst of a pandemic with, with, when the midst of unrest. Um, but again, I, I look forward to us having conversation, how we balance this out. All listen to one another, um, because at the end of the day, there's been so, so much going wrong for a long time. And we failed to have the political will to make some changes. Um, now is the time for those changes. Um, I've heard from a lot of different plea people. Um, I know the mayor's been meeting with folks and we're also looking at, um, assembling a task force to address some of those things. And I, I hope we have fair minded people because honestly, and I'm going to say clearly, I am not anti-police. Um, I'm anti-bad police. And I think the community wants to know that they have a, a, a level, uh, opportunity to submit their concerns and be heard because for so long, um, as you know, and you heard nationally, nationally as well as locally, um, people have felt that they're, they were not heard. And so I don't think that we have, we can afford right now to not have those conversations and not add our voice as lawmakers um, to what's, to, to the improvement of a system that we want and hope that we can tweak, um, for everybody's benefit. Right now, we have these groups, um, Black Lives Matter, that seems like for again, black people have not, um, gotten justice. And now we have an opportunity to tweak that and I hope that they will continue to use their voice in a peaceful way. And I think it's up to us to listen, listen with a, um, uh, you know, our good ear to, um, put forth things that will help not only the community, but also improve law enforcement. I think that we all want that. Nobody wants, I, I know, I, I know that in my district, we need police. We need good police. And I think some of the things that we're seeing and hearing so far, when they are listening, are a huge plus. Um, because for a lot of ti- a long time, people have felt they weren't heard. One of the things that I use an example, there was a complaint that, um, when there's an inter- in a, uh, in the kind of a fair. They said 95% of the time, those complaints are in favor of police. Um, I don't know if anybody can say 95% of the time they're good, especially when we see what's happening nationally. Um, you know, so those are things that we have to revisit and just see how we can make it work that again, um, the residents, the people who we represent feel as though they're being heard and not just ignored. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think the resolution that council Pridgen, councilmember Pridgen wants to put forward isn't, he's, he's basically saying, look at, I've heard the concerns of many people out there. Uh, I've heard the concerns. I don't necessarily have to agree with them, uh, with everything they've put forward. But I've heard their complaints and some of them were valid. Um, and I'm willing to listen to them. At the very end, we make our own determination with regards to the budget, whether we cut budgets, whether we defund, we allocate, we appropriate, we move money around. It's our decision, but we're telling people, hey, we're willing to listen. We may not agree with you. Uh, we may not agree with you, but we're willing to listen. We're willing to have, sit down and have a conversation. Um, I had, I, I, you know, I, I saw some of the, the information that went out there on social media. That wasn't factual. They were making allegations that weren't true. Um, and, but I want to, I, I want them to come before us so we can question them regarding those numbers that they came up with. Like $30 million that we cut from the budget, that we didn't cut for the budget. Thirty million dollars from Board of Education, they said we cut that we didn't cut. So there are things that were out there that weren't factual. Um, but I've heard their complaints and perhaps some of them have ballots. But at the same time, a lot of it was misinformation as well. And we call them out on the misinformation when it's misinformation. But I've heard the complaints. You have an audience, you have a chance to come before the common council. At the very end, the nine of us as a body will decide whether to cut, whether to add, whether to do anything, reallocate, reappropriate. But to have the conversation, I would at least say, hey, let's have the conversation. Let's talk about it. Doesn't mean we necessarily agree with them. Yes.
Councilmember. Thank you, Majority Leader. You know, I said with regard to one of the earlier resolutions that I think we should, um, all be open to having a conversation about anything that, um, any reforms that are put on the table. And I, I absolutely stand by that. My concern with this resolution, and I'm going to call the council president, is the title of it, I think, can be misleading to some people. I think that a lot of people see defund the police and they jump to thinking that it's an eradication of our police department or a complete reduction in all of the funding to the police department. So I, I don't know if there's a different title that could be assigned to this resolution that maybe doesn't have people jumping, thinking that we are, um, looking to completely defund the police department. But rather we're ha- open to having a conversation with the public about, um, other ways that we can engage the public to ensure that we don't have any of the problems that we've seen in other cities. So again, I think with, with me, it's more a, um, the top, the title of the resolution that it is the body itself. Cause I'm, I'm afraid that far too many people just see the title of the resolution and skip over it and just assume it's a, a complete reduction in funding to the police department. So I'm going to have that conversation with the council president today as well. I know he was unable to be here, so thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Wingle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, uh, all I was going to say is that the, the, the heading, um, the subject of this, this, this resolution is very misleading. And the only concern I have, uh, is not the language in the resolution. It is the actual title and the heading of the resolution itself, of which of course, when you just put out a blanket phrase like defund the police, you leave that very, very open to interpretation. Of course, of which I've already expressed this, that there are three very, very major levels. There's a broad spectrum of, of, of interpretations and perceptions of how folks defund police. First of all, it's reallocation of funds. Second of all, you have the dismantling of the police, reforming it. And then thirdly, you have literally disbanding the police. So this, I, I would not be against, uh, the resolution should be, um, language be much, much clearer and more intentional. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll send it without recommendation and we'll get a hold of council president and let him know the concerns that we've had with it. All right. Can move on to the agenda? All right. Where did we leave off, please? Raise your phone. What item refer? Where are we right now? Where did we leave off? Tiana?
61.
61?
Yep, duty to intervene law.
Um, that one is adopt the resolve, remainder to legislation. 62 is an adopt. 63, adopt the resolve, remainder to police oversight. 64, analysis Buffalo Police Department, CI team in Mastin.
Right, adopt they, that and send the remainder to police oversight.
Adopt the resolves, remainder to police oversight.
Yes, sir. Please, thank you.
65, adopt. 66, uh, University District Establishment of Citizen Review Board.
Okay, I would like to adopt that, sir. And the rest.
And the rest to where?
Uh, legislation, I guess, go, go to legislation.
Rest of legislation. 67 is an approve. Is that it? Councilmember Gollumbeck?
Yeah, question, and, um, I think it's 66, the Citizens Review Board. Um, what exactly would that be calling for?
The Citizens Review Board would be a body that will be, um, individuals who would be unbiased to review and hear of different complaints regarding police misconduct. Um, they would be doing investigation and from providing a recommendation to the commissioner. So they have commute, they have citizens review boards in Syracuse and Rochester. They've been very effective. Um, I think it's, you know, with Syracuse and Rochester have some, why wouldn't Buffalo? Um, but again, it's a, um, we're asking. Um but again, it's a um we're asking Corporation Council to look in if into us being able to do such.
Okay, is that is that duplicative of anything that we have right now of to Corporation Council?
Um I know we have something that was similar to that, and I'm trying to remember what's the title of it. It's upstairs on the thirteenth floor.
Right, Citizens Rights Commission.
Citizens Right Commission. The the only concern that I have with this right now is the possibility that I believe in most instances the ability to create a citizens review board as it relates to like departments like the police and fire is normally done through contractual agreement with your your unions. Because police uh matters are normally uh and administrative matters are normally contractual, like they the within the contract, there's a determination as to how these matters are meted out, how they're how they're resolved and they're normally resolved through arbitration and and so forth. So the likelihood for that to happen would be the 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 starting point would be way before now, when we would would have been at the table negotiating a co- a new contract. I'm not sure if at this point it's something that can be done, but what I do know is that with the citizens review board that I think that's upstairs, my understanding of the way it was supposed to work was um complaints um from the public would go to that board and there would be an investigation. And if there's any information or any need to 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 send uh some of the um request for information from police or from fire, then that department would do it and do the investigation. But the citizens would not have the authority to do so. Um there could be a combination of a a possibility that you look at a combination board where you have representative from police, from uh the mayor's office, probably from law, from the citizen review committee, and probably someone from the community. But again, as I said, to create something like that, I think is something that has to start from the negotiation standpoint. Um because once you have a contract that's already in in full swing, most likely, most definitely, there is already a determination as to how administrative disciplines take place and how investigation takes place. So that's that's, you know, what I understand at this point. But, you know, if you want any further information, I could look a little bit more into it or have um, you know, someone that deals directly with police um and issues in our office uh as it relates to re- labor-related issues and 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 administrative issues and disciplinary issues. I can have someone, you know, um speak to the council on that matter. But my understanding for now is it's not something that you can just create. Um after the fact, it has to be something that would have been negotiated, discussed it and so forth prior. Thank you.
Thank you. Um and see, once again, this goes back to the concerns that I have with putting all of these things out on the table. Because the perspec- I'm afraid that the perception is going to be that, you know, the council's talking a good game and people are gonna think, oh, Buffalo's defunding the police department. The council's gonna defund the police department. The council's gonna do this. The council's gonna do that. When the reality of the situation is going to be that legally, you know, there are hands are tied as, you know, when I listened to the mayor's press conference a week or so ago, and he explained as per state law, you know, what he can, what he can't do. And my concern is is that the the people that lied to us, you know, that lied about us, you know, the twenty million, the thirty million, um that some of these people are not people that are in good conscience and good faith. Um these are not people that want to reform or fix the system. These are people that want to destroy the system, in my humble opinion. And so they're gonna use us as a sounding board to make these accusations and these attacks. So just to give you an example, if you guys remember several years ago, when we were in um uh fourteen seventeen, I believe it was, and we were talking about getting police cams. And I supported funding for cameras for the police department. And during this meeting, you know, all of a sudden Dedlam broke out. I was accused of being a racist and a supporter of police brutality bec- by the the people that were there that were anti-police because I supported doing body cams for the police department. Um you know, my concern is is that, you know, this is, this is gonna lead into that direction where we're gonna give people that don't truly want to fix the problems in the city of Buffalo. Um you know, they're gonna come and they're gonna yell and they're gonna scream and they're gonna holler at us and they're not gonna listen to law. They're not gonna listen to rationality. They're not gonna listen to what we can and what we can't do. Um because they're not looking to fix the system. They're not looking to reform the system. I may disagree with my colleagues at different times, but I have a great deal of respect for all eight of you. I believe that we all want what's best for the city of Buffalo in the final analysis. We have different ways of addressing what's best and what's right. Um you know, and I don't think that any of us would purposely do anything that harms our residents, our citizens, et cetera. Um but I do worry about the potential that people will take advantage of us, you know, for doing something like this, for putting these commissions together. And then the anger that they're going to have when they don't get what they think that we promised. Um and some of these people have already lied. They're gonna lie again, guys. So thank you.
Karen, going back to the commission, right now the police department works under the mayor's control. He appoints the commissioner. Um the commissioner makes policy decisions. If this council was to impose something on the administration that the administration has as a right of power, I mean, it's within their purview, their authority. Is that something we can do or or would there need to be a referendum on that? Because I think it it takes power away from the administration by us doing that. Am I missing something here?
Um, well, it depends, right? I mean, you're you're correct in the sense that if the commissioner is appointed, he has a body of authority that is given with his appointment. We can't necessarily take away any authority from him without going through a referendum and procedure. Um but anything else, policy-wise, we can ask, and he can create policies. That's the the part of the purpose of him being the commissioner. He can um create policies that would govern his department. The only thing is, I I think in a lot of what um how the the police deep MBPD operates, a lot of the operation, I think, is done through their union contracts, right? Um whether or not they can do overtime, how much overtime they 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 can do, whether, how many people can be staffed in a or be in a vehicle at the same time. I mean, all be, a lot of those things are contractually negotiated. And so the problem becomes now, are we asking or imposing uh a policy or a duty on the commissioner to carry out on the on BPD that his hands are tied as it relates to um conformity, that he can't really do because he has already in previous negotiation or for previous contract allowed, you know, uh the union and, you know, together with him to agree upon a particular way. So these things are always um um subject to change because every couple of years, you have a new contract that you have to renegotiate. So these things are always subject to tra- to change. But um I think that's what you have to look at, like, what are we asking? And are we asking something that can be just done with a stroke of a pen? Or is it something that is contractual already and then it becomes?
Yeah.
An issue.
I think we understand it's either contractual or it's it falls within purview of the police commissioner. It's not something, I don't want people to think that the common council can just put a board together that is going to look at police officers' um history and conduct when we have no authority over that because it's a policy decision by the administration or it's a a contractual issue. So can we find out whether it's a contractual issue? Whether we can or can, um I don't think we can impose um.
I would look into it, but I know um I'm uh that's why we have um uh how do you call it? Like uh you have um the review of um um conduct and administrative review and stuff like that. Uh it normally goes through a body that I think is called PERB. Um and it it's done by one of the attorneys in the in the office, but it's something that has been negotiated and and agreed upon. How disciplined actions are going to be carried out or meted out on any um police officer is not something that is independently done through the um through you the mayor's office or by the the commissioner himself. Um even him, you know, can't independently do do it. It's something that has already been agreed upon in terms of procedure and process. So I know that, but I will definitely go um look into it and I will look um speak to uh the attorney that handles that in our office to ask him if this is something that is contractual, if it's something that we just do, you know, for, you know, out of I don't know, maybe we've been doing it for a long time and so we continue, but I'm almost certain that it wouldn't be a situation like that. It's most likely um union bond.
All right. Councilmember Rashid Wyatt?
Majority Leader, um we all understand that we've been doing things for a long time. And again, we've been doing them for a long time and they're not working. So this is not gonna be easy. I'm not saying it's the usual, but I'm asking the question to look into it to see if we can do it. So again, you we we understand what we've what we're up against. We understand it's a system. And if you, many of you heard Chris Cuomo talk about the system of systemic racism. It's in the system, and that's not saying that all white people are just to are are against racist. It's saying that there's a system that keeps us out of out of sorts. And I think that, again, this is a resolution to look into what we can do because, again, the community has asked for input and a process that they've been outside of the process for a long time. And I think it's been unfairly done. Um we are looking at police reforms. This governor is putting through police reforms, and this is part of that reform. So again, we understand what the current system is, but how do we get around it? Or how do we at the next round of negotiations and make sure that what we're looking at right now is something that we incorporate? So if we can't do it now, um when can we do it? So again, it's just in looking into it and investigating it, um seeing what we can do. And and if it was a time period, then we have to look at that time period. But we certainly don't want to sit here and just say, well, that's how it's always been because that's not the answer. That's not the answer that the residents and the nation is looking for. They're looking at, how do we make it better? And it's not through just a talking head, but it's that through through legislation, and we know that that's our role. So I'm using that in hopeful to get your support to look at that, to see how we can make it better and give the residents of the city um a voice. Um again, I I've said over and over again, I'm certainly not anti-police. And what I have one of the best chiefs in the city of Buffalo. We work very well together. Um but that does not mean that we cannot improve upon that. I think that what this is calling for is improving, not uh taking one against the other. I know that the concerns may be, we may get a group of people who may be anti-police. Well, we have to get a process in place. Um if we were to do this, that we don't get people like that. I mean, anytime you get a, you look for a CEO of an organization, you certainly want the right person and you get the right people in place to ask the right questions so that you get the right person. So I'm sure that that's not gonna be an issue, that we can get people in place that are middle of the road, that just want to make sure that we have good policing and the citizens are heard. And that's the whole whole essence of this process is to make sure that we have a process in which people are treated fairly, the police officer as well as the community. Because at this point in time, I I I bet you, if you ask many of the residents, they will tell you that when they filed an internal affairs um a complaint, it's always in the favor of the police. And again, if it's if it's fair, it's fair. But if it's not fair, it's not fair. And to revisit the cut the the process, I think is definitely more than fair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wyatt, I mean, Wingle?
Yeah, so um just to revisit uh item twenty dash seven six nine, um the the oversight committee, the no, 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 I'm sorry, the advisory board addition. The language reads as though if the council president will have the autonomy in singularly or single-handedly choosing the individual. I'm just wondering if that person's going to be um someone who we've all agreed upon, if we all get to submit a name for the advisory board and then the council president appoints that person? Or if this is another one of those um things where uh the council president is 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 just making the appointment uh themselves. So I'm I'm concerned about that. But other than um everyone else's concerns, um I think all of these resolutions need to go to committee. I think they all need to go to committee so that we can all discuss them, so the community can have an opportunity to discuss them as well and weigh in. Uh because without that, um even though we we do see and hear what the mayor has been doing and is saying regarding the reforms. He just uh released phase one of Buffalo reform uh today. And that will be enacted on Wednesday. So I'm looking forward to having all of these great discussions with my colleagues and again, to ensure that we are being very, very fair to the community and giving them an opportunity to speak on these items, to let us know exactly what they mean. Because I don't want to get this wrong. I don't think we can afford to get it wrong. I agree with Councilmember Wyatt. We we we've been doing things for a long time, but that doesn't mean it was it was done the right way. So please, let's just, if we can just send these to committee without you know, just making rash decisions to just uh not deliberate on these things, which we are uh elected to do. We were elected to deliberate deliberate and allow for the people to hear of the discussion, to make sure that we're actually reflecting uh their will.
Thank you very much. Um as you mentioned, on Wednesday, there will be a new link to the mayor's reform agenda. People can log on this Wednesday and see the mayor's reform agenda. I think we all know and understand that uh the reforms are needed. Um things cannot continue the way they are. Uh and so I'm very supportive of the reform agenda. Um I think there's nothing wrong in looking at things and evaluating them and making decisions. If it hasn't worked, then what can we do to improve upon it? The goal is to improve upon the professionalism of our law enforcement and to have a better relationship with the general public. That is the goal. I mean, as simple as that. Um so anything that lends itself to developing that relationship between the Buffalo Police Department and the general public. Uh if it includes reforms, then that's the way it'll probably be, not only here in Buffalo, but throughout the country, because people are starting to see that there are problems, that the system is broken, that there is a culture that needs to change. I mean, we've seen it on television. It may not be prevalent here in the city of Buffalo, but it may be prevalent in other places. But at at some point, we feel the tension right here in Buffalo. What happened in Minneapolis, we felt here in Buffalo. What happened in New Orleans or somewhere else, we've felt it here in Buffalo. So we have to deal with it. Um it's, some of it is systemic. But at least we're making some steps for, and I give the mayor credit for his reform agenda. It's that uh it's just the first step. And this council can lend its voice as well and listen to the people. Uh we're telling the people out there that are watching us on Facebook, we hear you. We're willing to have this conversation. We may not always agree with you, but we're at least willing to have that conversation. Um so this is another opportunity with uh Councilmembers Wyatt's uh resolution um regarding this committee to have the discussion, bring people forward. Let's talk about it. Let's look at whether it's contractual, whether it's, whether um we're allowed to do it without a referendum. Let's answer those questions as we go through this process.
Mister, Mister Chair, yeah. Mister Chair?
Yes.
Uh can I can I just say this? Uh you made a statement, and I just want to kind of just revisit that statement. You said the system is broken. I I beg to differ, sir, re- respectfully beg to differ. The system is not broken. The system was working the way they wanted it to work, and now we are breaking the system. We are breaking the system and we're gonna fix this system and rewrite it the way so that everyone has equal rights, so that there is social justice, so that there is racial equality. So, sir, respectfully.
Call it as you want. That's fine. That's your prerogative. Yep, not a problem. All right. Any other, any other comments, questions? None? All righty. Is that the last item on the agenda?
Yes, sir. That's all we have.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll see you on Thursday, eleven o'clock. Thank you.